Wes?
I wonder what all the secret talks are going on about.
Where's these chairs? You don't leave back too much.
I did too. I body-mined them too much. And who these two, do you know who these three are? And the guy in the blue. The green one, I don't know.
We'll be sure one that I need, they won't be here.
Yeah, one of the red shirt, I don't know.
I think he's with the electric. He's got a haircut.
Yeah. I think Andy's here tonight.
With Westwood?
Thank you.
With Westwood?
Andy's not here.
This Andy? Oh. No, I thought he was sitting down there earlier when I went. I thought, oh, good, everybody's here.
I'm taking five of those pictures before she changes my job.
Oh, yeah.
I think you can't put a new person in.
We've also had to put a courthouse.
Yes.
It's gonna save a lot more money.
Call to meeting, the order, everyone completing for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
Our pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
President Peters?
Here.
Mr. Hit. Mr. Reed's?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Here.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from June 26th meeting? Any questions or concerns? Hearing then all in favor to pass those minutes?
Aye.
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 Same sign. We do have three public hearings tonight, so can I get a motion to exit regular meeting and enter into public hearings?
Motion to exit regular meeting, enter into public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Okay, first up is, for the public hearing, is ordinance 146-25.
This is the ordinance, nonconforming signs. Improved or extensions of legal nonconforming signs may be considered and shall require permit and approval from the planning commission.
Any discussion in the audience for this? Any up here? Okay. We'll move on to resolution 149-25. This one's a resolution adopting the recommendation of the planning committee.
Well, thank you, Council President. If you look on the board behind us, I think I've got a better board than this one because it is illustrative of like the entryway to the community. This is the property at the corner of Betty Wilson and Highway 42. It is a, what they call the Four Seasons product. It's K Havanean. They have, they're the 18th largest home builder in the United States. They're planning on a 289 unit empty nester kind of community. So think of some of the product you see on Kenny Boulevard for that age group, but very, very different amenities. They've got, I think $4 million, they're putting in the amenities before they get started, which is a spectacular sign of their commitment to the community. If you look at the sign behind me, it's just remarkable, right? It is absolutely gonna be a beautiful, beautiful gateway coming into London, and it's gonna be a real statement piece. So all empty nesters, income, they're gonna be $400,000 to $700,000 homes, depending on what kind of upgrades they get and things of that nature. All HOA-driven lawn care and so forth, so they'll be well-kept and I think put the city in a really spectacular light. Any questions that I might be able to address for you?
Any idea what the business storefronts might turn out to be?
You know, we've got interest from a bank right now. We've got interest from a tunnel car wash right now. We've got interest from a hotel right now. Everyone's kind of juggling, do I want to be the extension of Eagleton or do I want to be right there? So, you know, they, this particular group, like, wants to make sure that it's very nice and we're gonna probably put some, not probably, we will be putting some standards in place to have a uniform, you know, kind of look and feel when people come into town for all of the commercial property because you just want it to look very nice and not hodgepodge and things of that nature. Wes and I talked about that today in terms of, you know, how much natural stone and what kind of type of, you know, material we're gonna require of them. So we haven't entered into any contracts with anybody yet, but I can tell you the bank wanted to be there right now, like this year. And the hotel would be in as fast, it's a Hampton Inn, they would be in as fast as we could give them, you know, the permission. There's some Mid-Ohio related issues that make me tentative to make any commitments for any kind of large users because there's only so much capacity until they do that sewer trunk line that, you know, has been talked about for a long time now. But the interest is quite substantial. So I think that you will see some very, very nice additions and we will control the quality of those builds so that it's not, you know, I mean, I've had guys call me about a liquor drive-through store and there's nothing wrong with that, but it's probably not the first thing we want to see when we come into the center of town and so forth.
And I don't have it in front of me, all the business would be fronting 42.
That's right.
Not on Eagleton.
Yep, so our vision is that both sides of 42 will be the business corridor and then these will be set back and, you know, looking at, you know, the backside, you know, the backside, they won't be fronting the highway and so forth.
One plan showed a roundabout, is it still planned or what?
Yes, so we are working with county engineer because this is, you know, where the city ends and the township begins, so it's gonna be a joint deal. We've worked with Bill Long and we've had numerous meetings and we're looking at, you know, what kind of infrastructure is gonna be necessary. Of course, you know, all that infrastructure's expensive and it's gonna be necessary and we're gonna make 42 a corridor worth, you know, worth the growth of the town. I mean, we don't want it to be backed up and so forth, but everything is gonna be staged because today we're gonna put in the site, there's not gonna be any extra traffic with that. The first year, they're gonna take the first six months to build, so you won't see the homes being occupied till 2027 and things will be staged to reflect when the activity actually comes and not, you know, spend millions of dollars and wait for that to come through and so forth. But the roundabout, there'll likely be two roundabouts that get included with this and keep the traffic flowing and allow people to get on and off and so forth. But that's, a traffic impact study's been bought and paid for by us to make sure that we've got a good handle on it and we've tried to do our best to project into the future what some of these businesses will be and what kind of these users will be and we're looking at having a user impact fee for those businesses based on their use so that they'll help front some of that load, not that you get, you know, a user that's got lots of traffic that kind of boggles things down and that will, that will automatically sort of address traffic flow and things of that nature.
What is the latest on the sewer trunk?
You tell me and we'll all know, I mean, there's a, yeah, no, I don't mean that to be smart, but there's just a real credibility gap with Mid-Ohio. They make, you know, I will tell you, I met with a contractor today over the new sewer plant that they've got out to bid and he's gonna be, he's doing the dirt work on Johnson's Creek right now and he asked me to find the location because it's not easy to find when you're looking at it. He asked me to find the location of the new sewer plant that they're gonna build on the county ground at 42 and 70 and, you know, they're gonna start moving dirt and building a $200 million plant before they have their first easement in place. You know, where I come from, you get your easements first and then you go build your plant. You don't spend $200 million and then try to figure it out on the back end. And for the last three years, they could have been doing that. So Mid-Ohio needs, they need guidance, they need leadership, they need, they're the greatest threat in my judgment to this entire county. So I can't tell you where they're at. What they tell me is that they're gonna go out to bid in September, they'll start construction in January 1st and that, you know, we'll have something by January 1st of 2028. But I say that because they have an easement through all of my property that says that they're gonna be done by June 30th of 2026. And so they haven't started construction. I mean, they told us to stop planting crops a year ago and we stopped planting crops and, you know, that like, so there's just, there's a profound credibility gap there.
Maybe Mid-Ohio will give it back to us.
And maybe we should ask for it back. So I would tell you that I would use dollars from, if we could get Mid-Ohio out of the mix, I would use dollars from our NCA and TIF to help financially make it make sense because it's not, it's, the leadership there is really lacking and I can only classify that as often wrong, seldom in doubt.
So I don't, I don't know if this question's for you, Mr. Gross, but it says requesting review of Reeves zoning preliminary development plan. Pardon me, let me go up the page. Nope, I think that was it. Anyway, it was suggested that the, by the city, that this be changed from a B2 slash PUD to just a PUD and I don't know that I understand the differences between the two. That's probably more of a question for the planning commission members that are here.
Yeah. So right now, the top 20 acres here is all B2, that's the stuff fronting 42 and the planned unit development or planned urban development is, just gives some flexibility. So the corridor that you see up here coming into the community, they want to beautify and have some of that be less commercial-looking so that you get a better transition between the residential and the business and frankly, they're paying up for that because they're taking a couple of lots there. So it just gives more flexibility in how we come through this entryway where that roundabout would come in. So I hope that answers your question, Wes, if you think.
Well, I guess my question, if it's already a B2 slash PUD, it was already planned unit development, correct?
Yes.
I mean, if it was already there.
90 acres is PUD, 20 acres up front is B2 and so we're just getting consistent zoning across the entire site. So it's still doing exactly what we're, what we're, you know, the spirit of what's on the zoning, it just gives a little bit of flexibility with their entryway there. So, you know, the PUD is just a more flexible tool.
Right, but B2 applies to those businesses on the frontage on 42, Lafayette Street. I mean, I don't know why we have to change that.
Mr. Reed's, where that came from was the B2 line, it was, it was somewhere, it was hard to tell where that exact B2 line was. So when we reviewed it internally with staff, the recommendation was to, since we're doing a PUD, just make it all PUD so that's not in question.
Okay. And the next question I have, just out of curiosity, it says the proposed development is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. Which comprehensive plan are we talking about?
The current comprehensive plan, meaning the one that's been on record for 15 years or whatever.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And there's no, I think we discussed this at the last meeting that you spoke at, but you weren't at the microphone, so there's no expected tax breaks here, no additional tax breaks here.
No new considerations, correct.
But it will be part of the NCA?
Will be a part of the NCA and the TIF agreement that's been passed. So nothing new, just what's already been approved by council.
Okay, thank you.
And just an interesting side note, just, it doesn't have to do with this development directly though, but a couple of years ago, when I first came in before this group and we talked about London Landing and the things that it would do for the community, we talked about $100 billion worth of new property tax that would be generated inside of the community and I gave some projections on income and things of that nature that would drive income tax. We're now, a couple of years later, and we're more than halfway through those projections and we're exceeding at every single level. So we expected it to take longer and deliver yet less and we've built over $55 million worth of new property in London Landing and when I talked to Superintendent Kramer, he's saying, hey, we're seeing all the benefits from a school income tax basis and from a property tax basis and, you know, so there's good things happening, right? And this is, this is an incredible thing. I mean, honestly, when you look at the plans that they have there, I mean, they're making a massive, massive investment. So they got $4 million in amenities and I'll bet you in their entryway and their other features, it's probably close to $1 million that they're putting in there. So they're sticking $5 million in before they sell the first home. So when you think about people making a commitment, you're not gonna go build all of that, sell 10 homes and say, hey, London isn't quite as strong a market as I thought. They're fully pregnant, they're absolutely committed and emerged to, you know, inside of the market because of how they're building their amenity package and the kind of dollars that they're spending up front.
I'm not fully convinced that this suits London as London is today and how the people of London, and I don't think it's been expected that people from London are gonna move there. I, you know, you're gonna try to bring people in from the outside. But if we just looked at this, how it helps London, they can put $5 million in the ground in amenities, but that's all under an HOA, then only those people are gonna, you know, really see the difference.
The only thing I would have to compare it to is Sovereign Village, right? So I put a very big commitment into that facility for any of you, or I think most of you have been there, right? It's a very amenity-rich community. It breaks your back when you're building it, but I can tell you that we've got better success in lease-up than anyone would have ever guessed. Some of those people are from London, most of those people aren't, right? So they're paying, you know, this will be my greatest competition is what I would submit to you first, right? When they first came and said, this is what we want to do, because the greatest pushback I get is, I want to buy, not lease, right? Like if they have the means, they're not thinking about coming in and being a renter. Mine's all leasehold stuff, but I've got people from California, I've got people from Phoenix, I've got people from Las Vegas, from the villages in Florida. All of them have one thing in common, their families live in central Ohio, right? Like all of them have one thing in common and that's they're grounded here based on their families. But these are people that have dispersed all over the United States, typically originally from here and now they're coming back to be by their families. So I think you might be surprised by the success of the program and that's, to me, you know, I've gotta feel strong enough about my product, but if there's anyone that should be threatened by it, it should be me because it's gonna directly compete with the product that I have and we're gonna grab it, you know, London's gonna, we're gonna have people that are in the older age bracket, right? Older age demographic gravitating to this community. Now, when you think about the schools and their impact, that's a brilliant thing for them. They're getting the income tax, they're getting the property tax and they're not having to serve the students and we're gonna have plenty of new students for the school with Johnson's Creek and some of the other products out there. But I think that you'll be pleasantly surprised that when you build nice things that, you know, I often hear whether it's at the Butcher Block or at Sovereign Village, I can't believe that this is in London, Ohio. And I said, we've gotta raise our head higher and be prouder of where we live and all of the great things that we have in this community because we should have everybody saying, hey, I'm proud to have this kind of product here and this is what we expect, right? So when we look at the different businesses that come, it's turning the heads of those businesses that say, you know, the Starbucks, the Aldi's, like all of those businesses are great for the community, right? And there's talks from other retailers that are very interested as well, so, you know, we'll see. I mean, they're taking the risk, right? Like the gamble is on, is definitely on their front, so. But the way this would work, just for an abundance of clarity, we will, the corn will come off, we will start moving dirt, they will, the roads and the curbs and the, all the utilities will be put in and we'll turn it over to them June 30th. They'll start building homes in July. That's kind of the sequence of where that timing goes. And, you know, the very first things they build will be those, they'll be building homes as models and they'll be building their amenities and that's what's gonna start, so it's gonna be, you know, I think, very, very, very good for this community. Beats a trailer park there. Okay?
Anything else for Paul? Maybe out in the audience wants to speak?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to our third public hearing, which is ordinance 151-25.
Good evening, good to see you guys again. I do have the same slides from last time, I'm happy to run through those again. I think there aren't a whole lot of new faces in the room today, but I can go through those and then answer more specific questions. So I'll start with that. So I'm from Sopac, my name is Phil Lepla, I'm our deputy director and general counsel. I've been with Sopac for about four years and based out of our Dayton office. In the audience too is Steve Harris, our central Ohio director and director of governmental affairs. He's based out of our Upper Arlington office, one of our member communities here in central Ohio. So I can get right into the slides. So a little bit about Sopac, we are a regional council of governments under chapter 167 of the Ohio Revised Code. So we are government, we are literally governed by our communities with our governing bodies being our general assembly that has one member from each of our communities, whether it's a community of 50 people or a community the size of Cleveland or Dayton, each community has one vote on that general assembly. Then we also have a board of directors made up of 15 possible members of the five largest communities, five at-large seats that are voted on and then five regional from each region of the state. We were originally created as an alternative to private broker model. Three communities got together in southeast Ohio, City of Athens, County of Athens and Village of Amesville and said, you know, we think we'd like to do this as a regional council of governments to create an electric aggregation program. So that's what they did 11 years ago. We've grown quite a bit since then. We are now up to 49 members, both communities and political subdivisions in the state and have expanded throughout the entire state. We like to tell folks we're a shared energy office, so basically we've become an extension of our communities. If they already have an energy team, we basically give them more bandwidth. If they don't have that capability in their community, we become that for them. But either way, we're there to help them with whatever those needs are. And then again, what makes us a little different too is all of our electric aggregation communities have 100% renewable energy by default. And next slide, please.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Go back to the slide, please. Just the question about the general assembly and board of directors.
Yes, sir.
Who has actual voting power? Is that the general assembly, the greater number of people?
It's, on the general assembly, it would be majority vote.
Okay. And the board of directors really doesn't have that authority to vote and bring things, they have to take it to the general assembly?
Yes, they do. So in our bylaws, it kind of spells out how that hierarchy works. But short answer is, we typically have three to four historically board of directors meetings per year with one annual general assembly meeting. Recently, we've been having more general assembly meetings because it was easier for quorum purposes, getting more folks together because we could have proxies. That's just trying to make sure that we can move business forward. And so we've been having quarterly general assembly meetings recently. You know, what we do going forward, I can't speak to today, we do have the ability to have virtual meetings now, which is wonderful, increases participation and that sort of thing. So I hope that answers your question?
Nope, not does.
So the slide's out of date, we've actually grown quite a bit in just the last month or two. We're up to 49 member communities and political subdivisions. Most recently, we had a couple of library networks join Sopac, library districts and then also SARDA, a regional transit authority, was the first regional transit authority to join Sopac. Then, I can get into it a little bit later, but essentially we have electric aggregation programs, natural gas aggregation programs, then we have a public pricing program, which is, allows these political subdivisions to lock in rates as well. It's a little different than aggregation. So Sopac is AEP Energy's second-largest customer in Ohio, behind only the city of Columbus. So that gives us a lot of bulk buying power and that is over 1.2 terawatt-hours of annual load. And then our mission is to provide simple, valuable, reliable public energy programs to help our communities achieve their local energy and sustainability goals, whatever those may be. So that's not one-size-fits-all. And then, of course, we're government, so we're subject to public records, sunshine laws and audited every two years, just like a government city. So just really briefly, because you guys already have an existing program, how community choice aggregation or electric aggregation works, we want to focus on the first bucket here, the electricity, which is the supply portion of somebody's bill. Under, in Ohio, we're a deregulated state, so people are allowed to either shop for power or pick their own supplier. So by statute, aggregation allows us to pick a new supplier for a community and set a new default rate. So it only impacts those folks that are on the existing utility standard service offer. If you've already gone out and shopped for your own rates, this does not impact you at all. Also, folks that are on PIP programs, by statute, they're not allowed to be in the program. program. Any more mercantile, larger industrial users, over 700,000 KWH per year, they can't be in an opt-out aggregation program. The delivery portion of the bill, that stays the same. That stays with your local utility. So the maintenance of the lines, the delivery of the power, making sure that you consistently have your lights on, that remains with the local utility. So this doesn't impact that. And lastly, the customers, the end user, who gets the local control, competitive, more competitive rates, and renewable energy in this case, too. So very briefly, this is the statute that governs this part of the process, that you have to have two public hearings for the plan for any electric aggregation program. And again, this part of the statute shows, you know, you have to publish for two consecutive weeks before these hearings, which has already happened. So I'm going to get a little more into the plan of operation and governance itself. Every single aggregation program has this, regardless of who your supplier is or how you do it, whether you do it yourself, through a private broker, through a consultant, or through a council of governments, you have a plan. The nice part about joining Sopac is we have an existing plan. It's already been certified by the PUCO. It's already been tried and tested, tried, true, and tested. So you don't have to go through the process of creating your own, and it's a much faster process than having to submit a new plan and get it approved by the PUCO. So the plan includes, it's a very boring document, if I'm being perfectly honest. It's on our website, so I'm going to give you the highlights from it. The plan contains information about the structure, governance, operations, management, funding, and policies of the program. And again, as I mentioned, it's certified by the PUCO already. A little bit about the description of the program and the goals of the program. So participation is voluntary. You can leave the program at any time. There is no fee to go out of the program. You can even come back into the program for no fee as well, if you'd like. And I'll go into a little bit about some of the timelines, too. Everyone, again, like I said, will have the opportunity to opt out, and we have multiple ways to do that. If somebody would like to opt out of the program, we by no means want to hold anybody in a program if they don't want to be in it. And if they want to go shop for their own rates, too, that is absolutely fine with us, too. But there, you can opt out by mailing it in, you can opt out by calling our 1-800 number that is a dedicated Sopac line, or you can scan a QR code and opt out online that way. So we try to make it user-friendly. And again, it's about leveraging the bargaining power. So bringing all 1.2-plus terawatt-hours together of bulk buying. And it allows you to do things like secure different sources of energy, ensure quality and reliable customer service, which we're very proud that we have a call center that's based in central Ohio, that is a dedicated Sopac line. When they pick up, they know what you're calling about. So we hope that's always a smooth process. And whatever your economic and energy development goals are for each community, little different for each community, but this is there to support that. So price and program stability, should go without saying, but we say this anyhow. Sopac and AEP Energy have never terminated, canceled, or suspended an aggregation program prior to completion or expiration. And again, per statute, you're allowed to select one to three years, and it's fixed-term pricing. Fixed-term means that price does not change for the, whatever term you pick. So the community can select one year or three years. Lately, as I mentioned last time, communities are going with one year, and we think that is a wise move, because the energy markets have been very volatile. So staying close to where that standard service offer has been a wise move. Again, we closely watch the energy markets on a daily basis and receive pricing information from AEP Energy daily. So we're able to see exactly what that market is doing and pick our spots. And then, lastly, we pay close attention to that, the local utility auctions, that make up those standard service offers, so that we are able to keep a competitive rate and lock when it makes sense for future years or communities joining Sopac. So I mentioned this very briefly, but this is who can participate: residential and small commercial electricity accounts. As I mentioned earlier, that cutoff for small commercial versus large is 700,000 kilowatt-hours per year, is that line, per statute. PIP customers, which are the payment income, are excluded from opt-out aggregation, per statute. Anyone who has shopped already on apples-to-apples, this does not impact them. It does not impact their existing contracts. And again, large industrial. And anyone who chooses to leave the program, they don't have to be in it. It is voluntary. So how it will work? Eligible residents and small businesses, they receive an opt-out letter in the mail. They then have a 21-day period, per statute, to opt out of the program. I've mentioned this last time, let's say it's day 22, and the person says, "Man, I meant to opt out. I didn't do that." They can still do that. There's no fee to opt out. The only difference is they would be in the program for one meter-read cycle before they would go back out to the standard service offer. So that is the 21-day number. Again, we don't charge any early termination fees, and again, you can come back in for free at any time. There's no limit either. If somebody wanted to go in and out of the program, they can do that. This is what a sample opt-out notice letter looks like. We usually work with our communities to get their logo on this as well, if they choose. We recommend that, because then it looks like an official piece of mail. We don't want people throwing these out and then later saying, "I never got that letter." We want them to make sure that they got it and understand what it is. This is the first two pages of the actual opt-out letter itself, just a sample of one. It details the actual pricing, a little bit about the program, the three ways to opt out if somebody chooses to, some frequently asked questions, and then there's also terms and contract, terms and conditions contract as part of this document, too. And that's kind of the high level of the plan. Happy to answer any more questions that you all have.
So you mentioned, if people shop apple with apple, they've done that on their own.
Yep.
If they've done that and they already have a supplier, this does not apply to them, because they already have a contract or they have an agreement in place for their rates. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so it would apply to the people in London that currently are on our program or they've not selected someone, they use the default?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because those folks would have been standard service offer with the local utility customers.
Okay.
Yep.
So it would put those people in this situation where they would have to opt out if they choose to?
Correct.
Okay? And then...
Which would be the same for any program that you, the next term of your program, regardless of what you did.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And then, if a community chooses to join, what's the turnaround time for them?
Yeah, so typically, once you have had these plan of operation and governance hearings and adopted the two pieces of legislation, we can start looking at pricing immediately, and that it is possible to execute pricing at that point. There is typically a two-month, let's say you had a brand-new program and you didn't have an active program now. It would take two months from the time of locking pricing to starting the program. That is based on the PUCO requirements, such as this 21-day opt-out letter. There's also a 10-day period that the PUCO reviews the opt-out letters before they get mailed out. So all of those regulatory requirements just add up to that two months. But in your community situation, because you have an existing program, there's a longer runway there. So, but that's not to say we couldn't start looking at pricing and figure out when would be a good time to lock for the end of your current program.
Well, we have a program, but it's not your program.
No, correct.
Right? And our program's going to expire anyway.
Correct.
So with two months, we're talking really October 31st?
Uh, yes.
I mean, at the very latest.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't mean to infer it was our program or anything of that nature. I just mean whatever you do.
Well, no, but I, like, I know, I understand that, but I'm just saying, there is a program, but it's going to have to be different than what your program is. I mean, whatever's in place is just saying that the city's joined that, but that's an expiring contract anyway.
True. But we're able to time it up, so there's no gap in a program, is what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You have a question right back there?
Yeah.
Where does Sopac get their energy from to supply the central Ohio community?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the base power is just bought on the open market, is how that it works. We also, we talked about last time, renewable energy certificates or credits. Those are, credits typically, we use green E-Rex are the standard that we typically use. Those tend to be Texas Oklahoma wind. So that is the bulk of the REX currently.
Does your company that gets the energy from these, where it comes from, how much it comes from the windmills?
How much of the baseline power or the REX?
Well, I guess the energy, where does the original energy come from? Does it come from a nuclear power plant? Does it come from the windmill or other source?
Yeah, that, it is a mix. So this is just purchased on the open market, so I can't tell you specifically where that comes from. That's kind of, it is not a specific source when it comes to just buying that base power, if that... But the REX themselves, we know specifically where they come from.
So what, my understanding is that you just buy it on the open market, you're not concerned that where it's being generated from?
Not, not the REX themselves. The REX, we're concerned about where it comes from, and we're careful about that. The base power, that's just how energy markets work. When anyone goes and buys that kind of baseload power, it's kind of mixed up, so to speak. So there's not, the answer's no to that part.
You have some questions, Jeremiah?
I got a few questions.
Now, okay, wait. Can you give Jeremiah the microphone?
Yeah.
I'll give this one to him. And then you can say your hand. There you go.
Thank you. My first question's for you, Mayor.
Well, he might need the microphone.
So we had a couple exchanges back and forth via email. And in the first email, I kind of, you know, went over some of the hesitations I had about this program. And you had mentioned, you know, that there was two options that you guys shopped, and the finance committee chose Sopac over First Energy Advisors for enhanced services, Sopac's lower fees, their partnership with AEP Energy, their offering of natural gas aggregation, and grant writing for federal and state grants. And then today, you sent me an email and said, you mentioned, your response was that you weren't looking for enhanced services, just aggregation providers, so just, if I could get some clarity on what you meant by that.
First, I'll tell you that I was not at the meeting where they picked Sopac. So a lot of this, Rex and I, when your questions would come in, and I'm just pulling the email up of what I exactly said. So a lot of this, Rex and I worked together to get you your answers, so we could get you the information that you asked for. Rex, do you...
First of all, I didn't go out looking for Sopac. They basically reached out to me, said they could be our aggregation program provider. I knew ours was coming to an end. Then they proceeded to tell me about the other products that they offered. I wasn't looking for the other products. I'm looking for the best deal for the citizens of London, okay? So one of the things that intrigues me is their administration costs that they charge the customers, the residents of London. It's over half of what we're paying right now. It's a win in my column for the citizens of London, okay? Second thing is, the other services that they offer, the grant writing services and so forth. And I would like to look at gas aggregation sometime in the future. That's going to be up to the citizens of London to pass legislation to allow us to do that, first of all. But if that does get done, now I've already got somebody we're a member of that can perform those services. I don't have to deal with the multitudes, and I'm talking, there's multitudes of these wholesalers that come in and try to put money in their pocket by getting you to sign the dotted line, to commit your city to them, and then they can make two and a half times what Sopac is charging us. It's all about cost and fairness to the city. Also, some of the things that you put in there is about renewable energies and Sopac and so forth. I did, through more research that I've done, found out that every aggregation that you're going to deal through is required by Ohio to at least have, at minimum, eight and a half percent of renewable energy as a part of their package. So you're never going to be totally out of the renewable energy arena, no matter who you go with, if that's part of the problem that you have with what we're looking at. I'm looking at what's going to be the best deal for the citizens, and I'm trying to build a relationship with somebody. Instead of going with somebody and then them go out of business during the term of our aggregation, now I'm orphaned, and I'm going to go try to find somebody else. I'd rather get with somebody that's going to be there for us in the long term.
Sure, but how do we know that we're getting the most price-competitive option if we only looked at two options?
Well, unless they're lying to me, I'm going with what they said.
So again, if we only looked at two options, First Energy Providers and Sopac, out of all the options we have that are available, how do we know we are getting the most competitive option, if we only looked at two options?
I guess I can't totally answer that question. I guess I don't know that. I'm going to basically say that an entity that is a corporation as opposed to a government entity is going to be charging us more than a government. And a business like Sopac that is large as they are is going to be able to drive down the costs where other ones probably aren't going to be able to. So I'm looking at volume of customers, being able to spread the cost of administration over a large group of cities and energy users, as opposed to these little other companies that go around. And I'm telling you, I don't have enough time, or anybody does. And if you ever get the phone calls where they're trying to sell it to you, you're going to end up hanging up on them, because they're annoying as can be, and they're pesky, and they're very lucrative in the way they present themselves. So I'm going with somebody, and second of all, they're going to be governed by us. Those other entities aren't governed by us. They're out for themselves. They don't care what London has to say about it. At least we get a little bit of say-so in this provider in giving us a seat on the, on the general assembly. So those are certain things. And, you know, if you don't, if you don't believe in government and the way that things worked then, that probably doesn't mean anything to you. But to me, it does, that you're governed, they're governed by the state of Ohio, they got regulations they got to follow. These other companies don't. That's where they get into situations that our last energy provider got into. They got themselves in trouble, and they were forced to disband. So that's the kind of stuff I'm trying to stay away from, if that answers your question.
Sure. Again, my main concern is that we get the most price-competitive option that we can get.
And I'll be honest with you.
Regardless of...
Regardless of who we go with, no one's going to see this as a good deal, because we're going to jump so much.
But are we getting the best deal?
They are going to make sure that they get the best deal for us.
But we don't know for sure, because we only get explored two options. This is my, that's my concern.
Well, first of all...
I mean, it's great that we can, you know, have a say...
Do you not, I went through this process, you haven't. Do you not realize, oh, laugh, it ain't funny. It's a lot of work.
I bet it is.
You have to compile a lot of information and give it to them. They have to run it through their scenario to see what kind of discount they can get.
It affects my pocketbook, sir.
Exactly.
So my concern is...
I'm trying to get you the best deal.
If we have more options we can explore to make sure we get the most competitive option, that's what the city should do, because it's coming out of our pockets.
You have the right to go do your own exploration if you don't feel like I'm doing a good job for you. I had, I had numerous citizens, when I did this the first time, call me and tell me to stick it up where the sun don't shine, because you're not going to tell me who I get to use for my electric aggregation, okay? Those same people, not all of them, but those, some people, some didn't have enough gall to come back and say so. They go, "You know what? That was a really good deal, what you did for me. Is there a way I can get back in?" And I think I've said that before.
You did.
"That made me feel good." So am I doing my job? I feel like I am. I'm doing the best I can for the city. I know how long the process takes. We don't have enough time. I probably should have started this two years ago to be able to go through all the providers, and then their rates are going to be out of date. So... then their rates are going to be out of date. So I don't understand.
All the providers. I think it behooves the city to.
It sounds like that's what you want.
That's all I'm saying. And you can get upset about it if you want. But speaking of the grant writing, I do have a question for Sopac.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So the one big beautiful bill that just was signed into legislation on July 4th is going to limit renewable tax credits and grant funding specifically for wind and solar, which is you guys' specialty. So how have you guys planned for this? How is this going to affect operations, etc.?
Yeah, the short answer is it won't. Will it impact energy markets in general? Maybe. I don't know. I don't think anybody knows that as we sit here today. We go out to the open market and we buy power and we lock rates. So is it going to affect anything else for us than that? No, we're just locking a rate. It's a commodity. If it impacts that commodity, sure, it'll impact the rates, but that's a market. So that's the short answer.
Your green energy certificates, will that impact those?
No, it should not because those are existing Rex. So when we lock those in, it's fixed. So I can tell you, just as of July 3, I believe, they were at one of the cheapest prices I've ever seen. So I can't speak to what it's going to do to the overall energy market, though.
Right.
It could impact that.
Sure. I'm sure it will because they're shifting focus back to fossil fuels. But in the grant writing, you know, I know the city is interested in that. Will that affect the grant writing at all?
So there will be certain grants that just won't be coming out. That's absolutely something that we're aware of. I mean, obviously, we've been planning for that for quite a while. So we are, we write for private foundation grants, we write for Ohio, state of Ohio grants. So, you know, we go where the opportunities are. So that's will there be as many grants coming down the line from the federal level? No, probably not. But are there other opportunities out there that we're exploring? Yes, we are.
Sure. Okay. And my final question for you guys, I appreciate the answer.
Sure.
Is there any way to get transparency on where our fees are spent?
Yeah, well, I can tell you the admin fees are for our operations. That is how Steve and I get paid and that sort of thing. So.
Are any of the fees contributing to out of state projects?
No, because we don't we don't own any projects. We are not financing any projects right now. Will there be potential power purchase agreements at a later date? Maybe, but that's that's a rate. That is not that's not coming out of our admin fee. That is a fixed rate, similar to like when we go lock power.
Okay.
It would just you'd be able to point to where it's coming from. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So when he had mentioned, you told him that we get you get the wind from Texas?
Well, the Rex, a lot of those green energy Rex do come from Oklahoma and Texas wind because there's there are tons of wind turbines in Texas. It's the leading state in the US for wind turbines.
So we can be sure that our money isn't going to projects there?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Are the money from the fees or anything that we're paying would?
I mean, we're only buying Rex. That is it. That's not that's not the admin fee. That is the Rex piece. That I know the frequently asked questions, questions that came to us on July 3, where the market was, I think it was $2.33 per megawatt hour for those Rex that if we were going to buy them that day. And that accounts for about $1.63 per household per month. I don't there's not much you can buy for $1.63 these days. So that that's how much going from brown power to green power is. Pretty darn minimal part of the bill.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So Mr. Campana, I just want I just want to say something for something you brought up early. And just a clarification. Finance Committee was not presented with two options. We were basically told the only other option could have been no PEC. First Energy wasn't really brought up. Now, you may have brought it up, and I don't remember this part, but we weren't given two options that day to discuss, that's for sure. This was Mr. Castle's suggestion that we move forward with that. And the Finance Committee on a vote of two to one decided to bring that to council. So but I agree with you. How do we really know without having looked at more than one option or side by side or getting some type of bids? Now, actually, I had Councilman Trainer, Councilwoman Trainer, pardon me, forward me the minutes from that. Actually, I believe Mr. Leffler mentioned that most communities were only getting one or two bids. I believe that was your part of the discussion, not Mr. Castle's. But we didn't even get the two at this point.
One clarification.
I was talking, whoops. I was talking about when communities are running RFPs. Recently, we've been seeing, take Shaker Heights, for example, only got one bid at the time. So then they went back out and tried to get more.
Uh huh.
Couple others recently, you're really only seeing one to three in this space right now. That's just that was just an observation that we're seeing.
Okay. Well, maybe you.
And I'm talking to clarify, I'm talking about the suppliers. So like, like AEP Energy. There's only a handful of those.
Not aggregation bids?
You if you mean governmental aggregators, there, you know, there'd be private brokers, there would be consultants, and then there would be regional council of governments like us. So I'm talking about the price itself, the rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. If I could get a motion to exit public hearing and enter back into a regular meeting.
Motion to exit public hearings and enter back into regular meeting.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Okay. But we have no communications or announcements, audience concerns. I believe so. Onto committee reports. Greg?
The Personnel Budget and Finance Committee met on July 14. Quick rundown. Overall expenses for the month of June were, pardon me, overall revenue for the month of June, $1,449,610. Expenses, $1,443,704 roughly. And for the year, the overall revenue excluding the bond is $10,154,531. I told you that might happen. I thought I turned that down. I apologize. And we can all enjoy that song. So excluding the the bond, pardon me, $10,154,531 to round that up, while the expenses are $9,845,537. So, you know, we're a bit to the good, you know, about $300,000 to the good, I believe, for the year. A lot of things that we discussed are not coming before us tonight. One thing that is, and you'll see this in your in your packets, is to a temporary increase in position so that when an offer is made to the new Safety Service Director, that they can have a couple weeks of gathering information with the current Safety Service Director and the administration. So there'll be an overlap from August 4 to August 15 at that point. Otherwise, most of the other things are getting moved to next month since we didn't have that much time before this meeting. The next meeting will be on August 18, 5:30 PM. And that's what I have.
All right. Thank you. Brent?
Yeah, I attended the Public Service and Public Safety on the tent. And I'll start with the Public Service, the Parks and Rec.
Speak into your mic.
The Parks and Rec report. They had 122 pool memberships purchased, 4,568 daily passes. Madison County Marlins held two home swim meets at the pool. Water aerobics is offered on Monday and Wednesday from 6 to 7. The new metal roof was installed at Cowling Park. Adult programs, they have coed softball, men's league softball, and ballroom dancing. And I have the Fire Chiefs report here. They conducted departmental EMS training, chest trauma, high health, departmental fire training, propane emergency training, hosted several students for ride time for tolls, participated in Independence Day festivities, inspected the fireworks, participated in the Strawberry Festival and Cobra Show, completed fire extinguisher training at Bluebird, and participated in the fair activities. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Rich?
Yes, we had Safety Service meeting on July 8, 2025. All three committee members were present, along with Chief Eads, Mayor Klauser, and Mr. Castle. No community members were present. Called the meeting to order at 6:10. Minutes of the June 10 meeting were approved as written. Police report, we did not have one submitted, but since then, we do have one tonight. Mr. Stahl will give that. You heard the EMS and Fire report from Mr. McDaniel. Under Safety Service Director, we talked about stealth traffic monitors, which I believe there's something coming up tonight about those. Under New Business, we just talked touched on candy being thrown from parade floats. And the only thing we want to do is we just want to emphasize safety and everyone be aware of the small children and not put them in any type of danger going after candy. And I think we had the Fourth of July Parade. I threw some candy out and there were a lot of kids. I mean, I've never seen so many kids at our Fourth of July Parade. They were everywhere. But just I just think that next year, we just want to be careful when we throw it out and make sure that they don't run out. And the parents are there with them. So I don't think there's going to be any issues with that. Under Old Business, we had none. We had a short meeting. We adjourned at 6:34. Next Safety Service meeting will take place on August 12 at 6:00 PM in the conference room next door.
All right. Thank you. Shannon?
Let's see, just touch on a couple things that Greg didn't mention. Let's see, the Tax Department gave an update regarding the use of the e-filing. Only about 90 people e-filed last year. Mr. Castle indicated that the surface soils are problematic now for where the new police department is to go, that there is a geotechnical company, hopefully, working on a remedy that will provide a solution. Lots of trouble with the sanitation department. I believe there's some resolution coming up later, dealing with some of the monetary issues and the trash truck service issues and what to do about what to do about that. Let's see. And I think that's about it. The rest of these other items will come up on a future council meeting.
All right. Thank you. John?
I have a meeting. The Public Safety Committee briefing for July 8, 2025. They have given a contingency offer to an applicant for the police office position. This is required to further complete the hiring process, including a medical exam and a truth verification exam. The facility construction is underway with some initial dirt work and the construction zone defined. There's no parking on East First Street from Walnut due to the driveway being on East First Street and the existing drive into the city property. Central Dispatch became operational again on July 2 at 1,600 hours. The current dispatch positions will be terminated on July 12. Megan Sharp was given a temporary position of support specialist through August. Applications are being accepted until July 11 for the support specialist position. Strawberry Festival, Cobra Show, and July 4th Parade were handled without any incidents. LPD participated in the London Library touch a truck as well as a K-9 demo at a local daycare. Attended the local emergency planning committee meeting, also the county chief's meeting. We received a cash donation from the local Rotary in addition to the Cobra Club's annual donation. Sergeant Joseph Harris graduated from the OSU John Glenn College of Public Affairs Public Safety Leadership Academy on June 13. This is an advanced eleven week training course focusing on leadership in law enforcement held at the OSP Academy. They're working developing a traffic calming program appropriate for a city with various departments and individuals. That's all I have.
Thank you. Lisa?
I was at the Public Service Committee meeting on July 8, and I have the report from the Street Department Superintendent. It's three pages long. The Street Department literally is all over town doing everything from picking up dead animals, mowing, repairing sinkholes, patching, trimming trees, cleaning traffic cameras. They've had to help the trash department a few times because we've had some issues there. They helped with the Cobra Show and the Strawberry Festival, cleaning up downed trees. They're still working to GPS the storm sewer system, and that should be done fairly soon. They were really going quickly with that project. They've worked on lights on the art building, street sweeping, met with the contractor at Johnson's Creek. To me, the most kind of interesting thing we discussed was Mr. Long always makes a list of equipment that needs repaired or replaced. And we talked with him about prioritizing that to try to see, you know, what's the most urgent need, what money is already in the budget that could cover a repair or replacement, and how to prioritize for future budgets. So he is working on that for us.
Okay, thank you. Onto city official reports. Pat?
All right. Well, good evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. As reported at the last meeting, Mr. Castle will be stepping down as Safety Service Director effective August 15. I do want to thank him again for his commitment and service to the city and the citizens. I had a short list of candidates and narrowed it down to four potential replacements. After panel interviews and careful consideration, I was able to select our new Safety Service Director. This was not an easy decision as we were very fortunate to have four very qualified candidates. So I am here and happy to announce that Steve Saltzman will be the new Safety Service Director for the City of London. Mr. Saltzman has an extensive background with safety services, and with his experience in leadership roles will make him a great fit. He has served as Battalion Chief and Assistant Chief for the City of Columbus Fire Department, and has experience on the law enforcement side, being a bomb squad commander and auxiliary sheriff. These experiences with government, leadership, and inner workings of many departments will be an asset for the City of London. Many of you have heard that our Law Director, Jennifer Hitt, is making a career change, and her last day will be tomorrow. It has been a pleasure working with Jennifer, and I appreciate everything that she has done for myself and all the many, many questions that I have asked her, and everything that she has done for the community. She will be missed, but wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors. The Republican Central Committee will fill this position by appointment on July 30. I have heard there are a couple great attorneys interested in the position and look forward to working with whomever the party chooses. And as you know, it always comes in threes, right? So Joe Moser has tendered his resignation as one of the Mid-Ohio Board Representatives for the City of London. Mr. Moser has a business opportunity that he will be pursuing, and that will take his time and needed a step way to focus on that venture. Mr. Moser has done so much for the city with his time as SSD, as you all know, and now with Mid-Ohio. I know this was a difficult decision to resign, but I appreciate Joe and his commitment to London. I will now have to fill that board seat, and I'm currently coming up with a list of names. If anyone has suggestions, please let me know, as I will need to appoint soon, as his effective date is July 28. Moving on. Development is continuing to be strong with Aldi moving right along and. Development is continuing to be strong with Aldi moving right along and Starbucks breaking ground. London Landing is continuing to build homes every day, and Johnson's Creek is moving dirt. We have also had some great things going on in downtown. The Nook Coffee Shop has opened, and I highly suggest that everybody go and check that place out. They will actually be having a ribbon cutting on July twenty-second at two P.M. It's a beautiful shop with great coffee. Madison Health had their ribbon cutting for their primary care office on Lafayette Street, and Main Wild Salon had their grand reopening in downtown this month as they expanded into another storefront. The County Fair was held, and I want to congratulate all the kids who had projects and for all their hard work that they put in. It was a beautiful week and seemed to be well attended. I want to thank the Fair, Fair Board for having me out for the opening ceremony, to judge of special interest projects, to judge the dress-up pig contest, and the dignitary swine show, be a participant. I also participated in the demolition derby, and just like the dignitary swine show, I didn't win, but I had a good showing, and I had a lot of fun while doing it. I'd also like to thank the Fair Board and all the organizers. These volunteers put in so much time to get the fair put together, and they do a wonderful job. We also held our summer movie in the park with our special event, and that was enjoyed by many. So thanks to our executive assistant, Eve, and the Parks Department for their hard work on this event. The kids really loved all the bounce houses and face painting, the magician, the movie, and just all the fun stuff that they had down there for them. The Project for Workforce Housing is making its way to Planning Commission on August fourteenth at five thirty P.M. These two-hundred-and-sixty-five homes in the two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar range will fill a gap for people who can't afford or do not want the pricier homes being built in London. I know to some that may still seem high, but with London Landing Homes currently averaging three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, this is a lower price point for a quality product. With rental rates rising, they'll be able to purchase a home for about the same amount that they are paying for larger apartments here in our community. This project will be located on the corner of Sharp Avenue and East High Street. The Mayor's Day Sale at Shoe Sensation in partnership with London City Schools Raider Rack will be held on August third from noon to five P.M. Shoppers will receive ten percent off their purchase, and Shoe Sensation will donate ten percent of the sale, sales back to the Raider Rack. The donation will be used to purchase shoes for kids who need them. The Raider Rack is a great program that gives students the opportunity to get new clothing and shoes that they need. So this sale is, it, uh, just in the right time for back-to-school shopping, because, as we know, for some reason, school starts on August thirteenth this year. So if you're buying shoes for back-to-school, you know, please come out and support this cause and a local business. We usually do this in November, but we decided that maybe if we did it right before school started, that it would be even bigger and better. Don't forget about the London Rhythm and Rib Fest in two weeks, Friday, August first and Saturday, the second. The event will run from eleven A.M. to ten P.M. with bands all day long, a car show, cornhole tournament, dunk tank, great food, and we actually have a new kid's zone on Friday from four P.M. to nine P.M. with a bunch of things for kids to do. So make sure to come out to downtown and enjoy yourself. Before I get to the fun fact, I once again want to urge everyone to mow and maintain their properties. Thank you for that. So the fun fact is eighty. We did put on the Independence Day Parade, and as Councilman Hayes talked about, it was a huge success. There was eighty different items, or floats, or whatever you want to call it, around eighty, and the road was just lined with people. Not just a line of people, but two or three deep, four deep in different places. So I want to thank you to everyone that helped put that on. Um, there's just a small handful that, that puts that parade on, so I want to thank them. I want to thank the participants and everyone who came out to watch it. And then the night before, we hosted the London fireworks, and I've heard nothing but great things about the fireworks. So I want to thank the City Council for your support with that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Rex, do you have anything?
Mr. President, can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Eads?
Didn't mean to be quite that vocal, I'm sorry. Uh, so we're going to have that gap in between when our current law director leaves and when one may be appointed. Uh, what do we do in the meantime?
They're letting me try the cases.
Okay.
No, um, with, it, the county prosecutor's office reached out and said, hey, we can help you guys out with this, so we're contracting with them for that two-week period. There shouldn't be an issue, um, with anything, so that is going to be the, the two-week fill gap. I was hoping that the party would appoint before then, but they wanted to give proper notice to give people the opportunity to put their name in the hat. So, yep.
Um, you mentioned the, the new buildings that are going to go Sharp Avenue and East High. Is that on the land that Pulte had before, or they were going to do use before?
No. Pulte was across the street. This is, this was, or it was the Heath property. So the Hess owned the Pulte area that's been purchased by someone else, and then this is a different portion. So this is on Sharp and High.
From Sharp Avenue to Andrew Court West?
Yep.
Along that side?
Yep.
Of the railroad tracks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Didn't know that. Thank you very much. And then, because I see, um, Mr. Gross, it made me think of this. I have no idea who the members who were appointed to the new community authority, we appointed some. Mayor, I don't know who you appointed, and I'm just curious as to who Mr. Gross appointed.
So my appointment was Donovan Cooper. Um, I thought that was a good pick with him, one, being part of the city government, being a law enforcement officer, but also him being on the school board, so being able to see both sides of it.
Okay. Mr. Gross?
Myself, Derek Wilson, and John Stafford are the appointed members.
Okay. I was just curious. I don't know where we find that anywhere.
Madison Messenger.
Great.
So, yeah.
Which, which Madison Messenger are we talking about? The one in Alabama?
Yeah. So we're, we're working through the process of having that first meeting and stuff, and then there'll be some minutes, but right now, there's no website, there's no messenger, there's no paper, there's, you know, I mean, there's not really a good vehicle to communicate to those of us not on Facebook and who refuse to ever be on Facebook.
Okay. Thank you for that.
But can I say one more thing? Please?
Sure.
One more, please.
Um, I don't know if you guys saw, but there is a company looking to acquire the Madison Messenger. Madison Messenger actually put a Facebook post out about that today, and I actually met with them a week or two ago, so see, see where that goes.
On to old business. Up for a third reading, Resolution one forty-two dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one forty-two twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
I believe this is the request to... Uh, this is for the police unmarked vehicle, is that right? Yeah. This is twelve thousand dollars. Um, don't know what kind of vehicle, but I suspect it will be unmarked and probably nondescript, uh, twelve thousand dollars. Um, so they're just looking to, uh, increase appropriations in order to acquire a vehicle for that purpose.
What are council's wishes?
Motion to adopt it.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Okay. Resolution one forty-two dash twenty-five has passed. On to Resolution one forty-three dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one forty-three twenty-five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Oh, I'll read for Andy, I guess. Uh, this is a request to increase appropriations, I believe, by twenty-five thousand dollars to install, I believe it's new light bars on existing street poles on High Street to, um, correct some dimly lit areas.
What are council's wishes?
A move that we adopt.
Second.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-three dash twenty-five has passed. On to ordinance one forty-six dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one forty-six twenty-five, and ordinance amending section twelve sixty-eight of the codified ordinances.
This is one-two-six-eight for non-conforming signs. The improvements or expansions of legal non-conforming sign may be considered and shall be required of permit and approval from the Planning Commission. Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Hey, ordinance one forty-six dash twenty-five has passed. On to ordinance one forty-seven dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one forty-seven twenty-five, and ordinance amending section two-four-two of the codified ordinances.
Uh, section two-five-two of the codified ordinances is, uh, concerning user fees for emergency medical services and/or ambulance services as provided by fire and EMS. Um, these fees need to be adjusted to be, um, competitive, uh, current rates. Uh, basic rates would be nine hundred dollars for basic life support, eleven hundred dollars for advanced life support, uh, level one, fifteen hundred dollars advanced life support level two, and an eighteen dollar per mile fee. The remainder of that ordinance, um, is unchanged. It's only adjusting those rates.
These are, uh, I'm sorry, these are actually the same rates that they've been operating with since they started the EMS service. That's what I was going to say. The rates haven't changed. The state auditor, during their audit that they did, uh, said that they have, the rates has to be in our codifieds. So that's all we're doing is putting them in the codifieds.
In this, in this last session, so I'm not remembering right. So it's just a matter of publishing those rates so that they are included within the codified ordinances, as may be amended from time to time. Very good.
What are council's wishes?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ordinance one forty-seven dash twenty-five has passed. On to Resolution one forty-eight dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one forty-eight twenty-five, a resolution revising job descriptions.
The street department job descriptions have been reviewed, I believe, by Clemens Nelson. Uh, there was some adjustments made, mostly pretty minor things, just adding a couple additional job descrip, or duties within these, and also, uh, I, doing a better job of establishing what the chain of command is. So, for example, an assistant super, assistant street superintendent should report to the street superintendent himself, not to the Safety Service Director. This is just clearing this up for all of these jobs through here. Finance Committee didn't find any issues with any of these items. I move that we adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-eight dash twenty-five has passed. On to Resolution one forty-nine dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one forty-nine twenty-five, a resolution adopting their recommendations of the Planning Commission.
This is the one I've just heard speak about, Planning Commission for Betty Wilson and at Lafayette, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine single homes, and for city, senior citizens over fifty. I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Ms. Reed's?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution one forty-nine dash twenty-five has passed. On to ordinance one fifty dash twenty-five. Got a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one fifty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, the execution and delivery of the agreement establishing SOPEC, and approving the bylaws of SOPEC.
Andy's not here, he's the sponsor.
This one is basically, you know, what we had, uh, well, we had a public hearing on this at the last meeting. Any discussion on this?
So I, I have to agree with Mr. Campana that I just think it's best if we would have multiple choices, that we could, we could weigh which choice is the best choice for the city. Um, we don't have that. I understand it's a lot of work. I think we still have time. It's why I asked what the deadline was. If the deadline's October thirty-first, that we could, I don't know, put this out for bid, or ask for those companies to give us the, uh, an offer on this, or give us a bid on this, and maybe we can do a side-by-side viewpoint on that and see what is best for the city. So saying that, I move that we table this till the first meeting in October.
Rex?
Uh, before you get too carried along, uh, I will remind council that I will be leaving my post, so I will be unable to get this completed. You'll have a new person come in, he's going to be green on this. Uh, my experience, it takes at least two to three months to get all this information gathered, to get this stuff processed. You're going to put yourself possibly in a case where we'll be orphaned, we'll be paying, be paying market rate for electricity for the citizens. I don't know if that's going to be a real happy spot for them or not. Um, I did do some more looking in, you know, if the main concern is what they're charging for administration fees, my Google search, you know, I'm sorry, Google for a grain of salt, but I'll take it because it's siding with me. It says the average administration cost for aggregation, aggregation companies is five, five point zero zero five kilowatts, and they're only charging point zero zero two. If that's your biggest stumbling block is what they charge, in my book, they're still the cheapest. And First Energy, it's First, what's the name of that company? First Energy Partners or something? I think that was the one I brought up at finance. They're the ones that basically got forced out of business by the PUCO because of inappropriate things that they had done. Um, again, I just reiterate, I think, you think, if you go with somebody who's regulated and audited by the government, you stand better chance of, of having honest, forthright companies to deal with, or an organization to deal with in their case, as opposed to companies that are out to make profits for themselves. They're out to serve the members. So just throwing that out there. Um, and I'm just throwing caution, it may not get done in time, which may cause us to go to market rates, or whatever that's called, uh, for, uh, electric usage.
I'll second. Councilman Eads, motion.
So as a point of order, I appreciate Mr. Castle giving that again, but as a point of order, I don't think he had the right to comment on, this is not debatable.
Do we need to table it, or can we just leave it on for fourth reading? I'm, I'm worried that if it, it'll kind of fall out of the, the brain collective if it's, um, not something that we have to continue to discuss, um, between now and October.
Well, I wouldn't want SOPEC to come back, think they have to come back every meeting until now, between now and then. And no offense, I, I, I like what you're saying, I just honestly would like to know that it is the best option.
This was presented in finance, and it came to council, right? Two, two to one?
It did. I was the no vote, by the way.
I have a question, if I may. Um, just to be sure we don't expire and end up with no umbrella to be under for a cheaper rate, what happens if we do, or if we do accept SOPEC? rate, what happens if we do, or if we do accept SOPEC for a one-year commitment? Would that give us, it'd be a whole year to research and see who may be a better choice. At that point, would it be possible to sign up with SOPEC for a year and then consider switching after that? I'm not sure who I should address that question to. Anybody?
Yeah, sure, please.
I, so I suppose, you know, it would be a contract outside of our bundle. Theoretically, you guys could do that. You would just have to give the advance notice required by the bylaws to leave SOPEC.
Okay.
Which I believe is 90 days, I think, before the end of an existing term.
Okay.
So, but you wouldn't be part of the main bundle. You would be a separate one-year contract. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Because we have a, we have a master supply agreement that, so it would be outside of that.
Okay. It was a weird question.
No, that's.
You had a good answer.
Yeah.
I just know Mr. Saltzman stepping into the position currently held by Rex, he's got a giant learning curve, and I can only imagine the paperwork that has to be submitted and the questions answered to get another quote, or two, or three, or, or whatever. I'm just, our current contract and rates expire at the end of the year? November.
I believe it's the end of December. Yep, through the, end of the year.
Just, I'm sorry, Mr.
Go ahead.
Mr. Love, I just wanted to clarify based on what Lisa asked. Your, your standard agreement is for member communities and SOPEC is not for one-year, two-year, five-year, 10-year. It's, it's a membership until you choose to leave the membership.
That's correct. You, you have to be participating in one of the programs to remain a member, essentially.
Okay, okay. And since there's no prohibition, you can come and go as you please as a member community, is that correct?
Yeah, it, it just would have, sorry. It would just have to be within.
With a, with a proper notice.
Per bylaws.
Right, 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 right. So having a one-year agreement is really not serving any kind of function if there was no, if there was not an intent to, or, I'm sorry, if the desired collective was to leave, so long as we follow the terms and the bylaws, we could do that.
That's, yeah, that's correct. Like, like I mentioned, so under the MSA, a term is classified as three years. So that's why I say it would have to be outside that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Well, that's just one of the options.
So I'll give you a good example. The city of Cleveland is one year, one year, one year, like that. So they, they go back to council to re-up a one year. So it would be similar to that.
I see.
And the, the only other thing I would just, if, if you want my comment on, admin fee is only one element. The end rate is the most important, the most important thing, because the admin fee is baked into that rate. So really, the, the proof and the pudding, so to speak, is that end rate. So.
Mr. Campana, is it Campana, Campania? Campana. Is yours a financial dispute with SOPEC or is it a philosophical one with regard to their commitment towards green and renewable energies?
Just making sure the city is exploring more than a couple of options for something that's going to affect the entire town. I mean, I understand the prices are going to go up no matter who we pay, but how do we know we're being the best option while looking at a couple of options?
I, I do. Oh, no, 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 I agree with you, but I'm getting a sense from you that you have a very big aversion to anything that's green or renewable. Do you believe that because there's a higher cost associated with those things?
I just believe that this administration currently is moving towards fossil fuels and away from renewable energy. The cost of renewable energy is heavily going to go up.
You're talking about our federal administrators?
Yes. And it's projected ten to thirty percent.
Well, not much we can do about that. Thank you. I think we have a motion.
Oh, we do. We have a motion and a second.
A second. It's a table. So I guess roll call.
Mr. Reeds.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Abstain.
Ms. Traynor.
No.
Mr. Stahl.
No.
No.
Ms. Jackman.
No.
What's your reasoning for abstain?
Just like, a little more bound, I guess.
So we have three to two, I mean, so it didn't pass?
Did it fail? I, I know it takes a majority vote to pass, but did it fail?
Three to two, with two yes, three no's, one absentee.
One absentee. But he's a sitting member. I would think it would. Your call, your call. Okay.
So our council's wishes on ordinance 150-25.
I would suggest that we just leave it on for fourth reading.
Could be my thought.
All right, on to ordinance 151-25. Again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 151-25, approving the plan of operation and governance for the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, electric aggregation program, and for the purpose of jointly establishing and planning an electric aggregation program.
This is pretty much piggybacking on ordinance 150-25.
I would, I would make the same proposal, that we just leave it on for fourth reading while we research and make sure that this is the best option for everybody.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, up for a second reading, resolution 153-25. Again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 153-25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Is this me?
Yeah.
All right. This is an request for increase in appropriations by, I don't remember how much.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand for the purpose of purchasing speed bumps. And I believe these were solar-operated speed signs that are relocatable, as well as the speed bumps relocatable, so that we can have some ability to address speeders and other unsafe traffic conditions based on current need.
Any discussion? For council's wishes on this?
There's no emergency clause.
There's no emergency on it.
On to resolution 154-25. Again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 154-25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
I'll do this one. So because we've had public input about people speeding or being dangerous drivers in neighborhoods, this is mostly a speeding thing. It was discussed and brought forth from the finance that if we could buy the monitors, the stealth monitor, I've seen a lot of comments right before I came to council about these today, but these, these monitors, instead of having the, the big sign there that, you know, you're going to drive by and it says you're going 32 miles an hour and a 25, and it counts that, the stealth monitors are set beside the road. They don't have the sign. People don't necessarily know that they're there. They can get a better read, you know, on what people are really doing, because they will tend to slow down when they see the signs. So this gives you a better read of that. There's discussion to buy multiple stealth monitors. We discussed this at the last meeting also, that the police chief thinks we were, be purchasing too many of these, that they wouldn't be needed. But as Mr. Castle pointed out, we can appropriate the money. He doesn't have to buy those just because the money's appropriated. Maybe he just wants to buy one and use that, and we can start to get the read where we want to put the, those signs or possible the speed bumps.
They have one stealth monitor currently, is that correct?
They, they do have one.
And so this would give them the ability to buy, I think, two more if he wanted? Is that right?
Chief told me.
Four more. It was either three or four more.
I talked with the chief the other day. He would like to have one more and then leave the rest of this money there for whatever they, they need. So if he gets another one, he told me he'd be happy with two.
So, yes, chief did say that he would probably want one more so we could stagger it, but I think the way Councilman Hayes said, and then he can leave the money there and do what he wants with it, that, that's not, that's not how that works. I just want to make that clear, that this money will be appropriated for what it says it's appropriated for. So if we get to, buy one more and we have two, and then he goes, you know what, maybe I need one more, then he, then he can buy the third or the fourth if needed. If not, it'll go back into the general fund at the end of the year.
But it is going to the police miscellaneous fund, correct? Yep.
I was actually trying to say that. I just said it wrong.
It's okay.
Any other discussion on this one? On to ordinance 155-25. Again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 155-25, an ordinance adjusting the rate of curb assistance.
I think this is with the ongoing 155.
Yep, 155.
The curb assistance is the, is for the trash. And I think it was called to council's attention that our rates are very low. And I don't remember, was it $2 for, for a sanitation worker to either come up your drive or go to your door in order to get your trash? And I believe the proposed change is $12 a month unless you qualify for assistance by being over the age of 65 or otherwise handicapped. This would just be for able-bodied persons requesting residential service to increase that, that rate.
Current rate right now is 309.
Yeah, it's 309, and this will move it to 12. Curb assistance for, like Councilwoman Traynor said, the curb assistance for those 65 and older or handicapped that need it will still be free. This is for under 65 years old and able-bodied.
Any discussion on this?
I'd like to amend it to $20. Like I said, it doesn't affect handicapped or disabled, yes.
Is there a second on that?
I got it. I'm trying to do it now. I apologize. Think I did it.
Sanitation departments in pretty big trouble. See how they can make any money on $12.
Then motion to amend, any, is there a second? Any other discussion? Okay, on to new business. Ordinance 157-25. Again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 157-25, an ordinance for strength on job descriptions.
And I believe, is this the temporary job description?
Yes.
Okay. And so this is, I think, to accommodate the overlap of the safety services director post, is that correct?
Yes.
So, and it's got a sunshine provision written, so it will terminate upon the date stated, and there is an emergency clause because of the fact that this start date is in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so it's exactly what she said. So this will just overlap the two SSDs from August 4th to August 16th. So the new safety service director can get in here and be trained and learn things from Mr. Castle before he leaves. I know it's difficult with, you know, overlapping two positions, but the new safety service director will come in at a lower pay. Hopefully, I won't have to come back to get any amount of money to fill that line. Hopefully, that line will be okay throughout the year. But that really also comes down to how much Mr. Castle's able to cash out for his time. So this is an emergency. We, we do not meet again until after the 4th. I think we meet, that, that's a Monday, so we'd meet that Thursday for a council meeting. There is an emergency, so I, I would ask that it be suspended, and it would have to be unanimous suspension because there's only six of you, but I do ask that it be suspended and passed so we can just get him in here. It would make the transition so much easier if we could get him in here to do that.
Any other discussion?
If anyone has any questions for me before anything happens, please feel free.
Mr. Castle, you had mentioned at the finance you didn't think your payout was going to be too much.
Your payout?
No, I don't, I probably have a day or two vacation. That's all I got that, that I qualify to get paid out. I don't qualify for some time period. It's longer service, so it'll be maybe two or three days.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully it'll wash, and at the end of the year, I won't have to come back to get any money for that salary line.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Traynor.
Yes.
Mr. Stahl.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. Reeds.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
For council's wishes.
Do adopt.
Second.
Ms. Traynor.
Yes.
Mr. Stahl.
Yes.
Ms. Jackman.
Yes.
Mr. Reeds.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
I gotta say yes twice.
Mr. Hayes.
Hurts, doesn't it sometimes?
Say it loud and proud. Lean up there and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council. I appreciate that. That'll definitely help the transition. I appreciate you guys.
Okay, ordinance 157-25 has passed on to resolution 158-25. Again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 158-25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Yes, this is a city, we're funding the 4th of July fireworks. Next year will be 250 years. We need to secure the company much earlier than in previous years because there are already a glut of things going to be going on, so we need to get our company in and get, get taken care of right away. And I'm going to ask for emergency on this. The amount on this is $40,000.
Is that an increase of $40,000 or increasing the budget to $40,000?
Okay, so after the fireworks, Hamburg Fireworks, who is a company that we use every year, reached out and said, hey, just wanted to check and see how everything went, and everything did go great. There was only one that didn't go off, and they fired that at the end, but it was a great show. She then proceeded to tell me that, as we all know, next year is the 250th birthday of our great nation, and that people are starting, that in the past have not done fireworks shows, are now booking to have fireworks shows done because of the 250th anniversary of the birth of the United States. So she said. So she said, we would like to lock you in now, because as you guys know, I usually wait till the first of the year. We talked about putting this in to the budget this year so I wouldn't have to bother you guys, um, but it's just kinda weird because it is the 250th. So she said, we'd like to lock you in now so you don't get pushed out because there's so many new people trying to get fireworks shows for next year. Um, and then, so it would be not an, not an increase of $40,000 of what we did this year, we paid that bill for this year, this would be $40,000 for the 2026 show.
But it's not an increase, that would just be the total budget amount?
It is an increase of how much?
10, 5?
2.
5.
It was 30, we did 30,000.
I, shoot, I can look real fast. I believe, I believe it was 30, we did 30 this year and, and then you can talk on this, Councilman Hayes, of your thought process when you said 40. Okay, why not? Yeah, we did do 30 this year for 2025.
So is that 40,000, is that all gonna go towards fireworks or is that going?
This is basically, and there was some talk of maybe having a little something before that.
Yeah, that would be separate. This would be to enter into contract for the 40,000 or whatever amount you guys wanna do, to enter into the contract so I can, um, sign the contract and then, you know, get them paid this year and then we are set for 2026, July 3rd, 2026. And then, yeah, I won't come back to you for anything more at that point, for fireworks.
It's a little bit of a raise, I understand that, but it's 250th year and we do want to get them in contract, we do want to get it signed, so we're not running around looking for somebody at the last minute. Um, I don't know, be that much in 20, might be 2027, wouldn't it? Yeah, so, but everything's going up, prices, uh, ammunition's going up, um, so, and this year, I've had so many comments on this show we had this year, uh, I've had some people that normally didn't care for our show all that much come to me and say, that was a great show this year, uh, it was excellent, um, you guys outdid yourself, had a lot of good comments on it, so, um.
So if I may, I'm more inclined to keep the 30,000 we had. Mr. Mayor, I believe has a pretty good rapport with businesses, this will be the perfect opportunity to be the 250th anniversary. If businesses want to help sponsor this, throw that in. If they want to throw in 25,000, we could have a $55,000 show, but we're paying for 30,000. Uh, I think we probably still have time, I understand that they'd like to get this done, but, you know, I'd like to know if, if any businesses want to get involved at this point before we increase the appropriation.
How long have we been with this company?
I'm trying to think if we had a different company when I first got, got here, well, yeah, I cannot, I cannot remember. We've been with them for the past, I'd say at least five or six years, at least, minimum. I'd have to go back and look.
You don't think we have some sort of an existing, uh, client relationship?
Well, I, I, so, I'll let you know, I said, uh, so, you know, I told her thinking, then on July 10th, I said, you know, if, if you could, I said, I've spoken to city council about July 3rd, 2026, I now have to wait for them to pass the appropriation so I can enter into contract. Please pencil us in and once the legislation is passed, I'll send over the signed contract and she never emailed me back. So I don't know if she did not email me back so she would not, you know, do something she was not supposed to do by saying, okay, we got you or whatever. Um, we have, I, I won't say that we have not had a good experience with them or a good working relationship with them, um, but her giving that warning, um, you know, just kinda made me a little bit, a little bit nervous, so. And, you know, if you want to do, um, I'm just looking through this email real fast. If, if you want to do, amend it to the 30, yeah, cause she said, you know, when I said it was a great show, she said, it's wonderful to hear because, um, it's one of my favorite displays. I'm sending you the 2026 contract as of our dates of 2026 are filling quickly. A lot of communities have huge events doing, doing, due to it being the 250th anniversary of the United States. So, I mean, we all know what happened to Plain City two years ago. Plain City got bumped, didn't have fireworks. So if you want to amend it to 30, I'll sign the contract for 30, at least I'll get the contract in and then, you know, if somebody wants to do a fundraising, they can do that. I guarantee between now and then, if I say, hey, we want to bump it to 40, I, or whatever, I assume they would not have an issue with that, bumping it up, but getting the contract in and solidifying the day is what I'm worried about. Um, but, but.
Did they require a deposit or is it pay it after?
I have to pay, I have to pay beforehand. Um, so I was just, yeah. I'd have to look into that, cause like I said, we've never done, we've never done this where, we've done it a year before. Usually I try to come to you guys in January or February and just try to get it rolling so we make sure that we get our dates, cause the 3rd and the 4th are always the dates that fill up fast for them.
Wes Jeff always works a year ahead. They do their, all of their fundraising this year was for next year. Okay, so and I think they go ahead and order. Uh, well, hearing that discussion, I move that we amend the amount to $30,000.
I'll second that.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Uh, no.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 158-25, that'll stay on, amended to 30,000? Okay, on to resolution 159-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved. Second.
Resolution 159-25, a resolution to abolish the City of London recycling program.
Yeah, this is to, uh, to try to help our, uh, wounded sanitation department that's in pretty bad shape, it's gonna need a lot of, uh, a lot of money and a lot of repairs over there with the growth taking place, but anybody who's, uh, a diehard lawless or die, there should still be, uh, places to, uh, take your recycle to. Rex said we had to, something in place before we started doing this and we were, uh, supposed to be making money off the recycling when we first got into it, but it's ended up causing us. But there will be, uh, something set in place, right, for people to recycle.
What's planned, just having a couple recycle bins there that they can?
Um, there's a couple possibilities, we, we gotta work through that, but, um, Rumpke could play, bring in a, a container that people could come and bring their recycles and put in it. There's also a company that come, a company that comes to Merrimack and sets and people that live outside of the City of London, they let them bring their recycling and they take it away for them. That's probably the best option, probably wouldn't be any cost to the city at all. Uh, we're gonna reach out to them and see if we, they could open that up and let our citizens come and, and, uh, utilize their services.
And how much is this gonna save us, uh, doing away with it?
It, it's really hard to put a handle on it. Um, I know it's, uh, $1,800 to dump, that's a lot less than what we pay for trash, but according to my workers at sanitation department, 50% of the time their recyclables has to be dumped in the trash anyway, because it's contaminated with items that's not recyclable and we just don't have the manpower to go to diving into the dumpsters, pulling out all those things. Uh, and then there's also been times when we didn't catch the item, we've got a whole container full of recyclables, the recyclable, recycling company comes and goes, nope, it's gotta go in the trash, we're not taking it, it's contaminated with items that's not supposed to be in there. So they're guessing is 50% of our recycling goes in the trash anyway. Uh, where we're looking at cost savings in is manpower, wear and tear on equipment and fuel, in that we will not have to run those routes twice, because what we do now is we go through with a truck, pick up the trash, take it to the dump, dump it, come back and run that route again, just to pick up the recycles.
Right.
So we're basically running the routes twice. Um, it's, it's causing, you know, overtime hours because of, you know, the city's growing, we don't have the trucks to handle it, we don't have the, and/or the employees to handle it, we can't afford it right at the present time.
It's a money pit, it's a money pit, right?
Currently, yes.
And, uh, this will help keep our sanitation department on?
It, it, it will, it will help, every little bit's gonna help.
Now, are we gonna be able to put out both of our cans that we have now for trash?
I believe so, yes.
Cause they could just do it both of them, okay.
Yeah. But from what I just heard, it's not gonna save us money on, on that dumping fee.
No.
Right, because it's a cheaper fee on the recyclables and 50% of that is at a cheaper rate, so now we're gonna bump everything up to the higher rate. That's not gonna save the money. The savings or the reason to do this is because of not having trucks, we, because of that, if I, if I understand this correctly, because of that, you've pretty much, um, discontinued that program now because we don't have the people to do it, so they're picking everything up in one truck most of the time, is that true? No, it's not true. It's not the people, it's the broken down equipment that we are dealing with. We had as many as three trucks broken down, uh, just three weeks ago. Okay, but, but because of that, you're picking everything up in the single truck? That, that part is true, yes. Okay. At, you know, at times, we try to adhere to our policies when we have the equipment to do it, but when you don't have trucks to where you can run the routes, instead of having people working numerous hours of overtime, we opt to go ahead and pick up trash and recycling at the same time to get that route completed in a timely fashion.
Now, will the, uh, recycled trucks that we have now, will they be able to be used?
We're using the same trash truck for trash and recycling.
So it might save us even more money not having that.
And, yeah, so I'll just go ahead and to share with council now while you're here. Um, we finally got a quote in on a new truck, uh, quote come in at $389,000, you gave me $400,000. Everything was great. I said, when can we expect it? He said, 12 to 12 months, and I dropped my mic. That's not gonna help us a bit.
Not now, that you are getting on the right.
12 months isn't gonna, we're, we're, we're in a really bad predicament with our vehicles, from what I'm being told. They're constantly breaking down. I, you know, is it age, is it abuse? I can't figure it out, I'm not out there riding with them to know what's going on, but we're experiencing numerous breakages of our equipment.
But we are gonna need a truck though, right?
Yes, we are gonna need a truck, I, but my feeling is we need it sooner than 12 months. So, my feeling is we'll probably have to come back and, uh, either amend that piece of legislation to take the word new out, uh, because I have researched buying a used truck and they, because of the 12-month waiting period, used trucks are almost as expensive as new trucks. So we're not gonna save a lot of money even on buying a used truck, but at least we'll have it here and we'll be able to put it to use sooner.
But if we're not doing the recycling anymore, we should be able to hold out until the new truck gets here?
That'll help on wear and tear, I would say, yes.
So we are, uh, locked in to get the new truck in a year, right?
I've not signed the dotted line yet.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
I'm reassessing to where we can get our, you know, where we're at on our equipment. Right now, it seems like one keeps breaking as soon as we get one fixed, one's broken going back in the shop.
Which is why we should already have that truck signed, we need it.
I, I, that's what I'm saying.
We need it to hear about it.
That's what I'm saying, Brent, we need it tomorrow, not a year from tomorrow and, uh, you know, I, you know, I don't want to put, sign something that we're, it's gonna be a year down the road and then we don't have any trucks to pick trash up with. That's my predicament I'm in. This department is in, equipment-wise, and unfortunately, you know, two of those trucks are less than five year, well, right at five year old, five years old, we're making the last payment this month. They're right at five years old, you would think these things would last longer than that. We had to put a new transmission in one of them and, um, I, the amount of miles on it is nothing, in my mind, for a heavy-duty vehicle.
Could it be because we don't have a maintenance plan in place? That's, I've been saying that.
We, we maintain them the best we can, yes.
When they need it, you're a budker, you're gonna have to maintenance.
They're supposed to be doing preventive maintenance, they do, they have logs, I went and checked them, they state that they, they check stuff. So that's all I got to go by, unless they're falsifying it, I have no way of knowing anything different.
Has there been any exploration, um, I, I, first of all, I just want to preface this with the number of complaints that I've gotten from constituents about, um, abolishing the recycling program without having any kind of an alternative in place already?
My alternative is that council raises the rates by $7 a month, would probably do it. And I don't know how well that's gonna be received whenever.
Well, we have an alternative, there's gonna be places where they can take their recycling like they had before.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're asking me this, I'm trying to do what it takes to, to keep costs low, because citizens got really upset when we were taking care of water and sewer and we raised it $5 a month for, for sewer. They were irate about it. I don't know how they would feel if we raise it $7 a month. From what I understand, we are low, uh, compared to what private companies would charge coming in here, so, you know, our rates are low, from what they say.
Can you, do they know per, uh, container, when they're picking it up, if it's not pure, if it has trash mixed in with it? Cause then you could.
Unfortunately, no. They just pull up and lift it. The lids are down whenever they dump it, then it's in, it's in that cart.
Camera.
And I don't, you know, sometimes they might be able to see what's in the cart, but now you've got your cart contaminated with stuff, do they get out and start sifting through the cart? What do they do with it if they do? Uh, there's just bad situation. Now, back when we did it all by hand, they, they would probably look in it before they dump it, maybe, and then set it back off, say, I, I do know that they used to do that back when we had the, the green truck that did recycles and we had the totes, they go out and they, nope, they would just leave the totes there and they'd put a sticker on it that says, "Not recyclable" on it and they'd just leave it. So, you know, automation, we, we had to go that way because of cost. It's, it's, it's purely cost-driven. It's hard to find people to, to man those trucks that's capable of doing it, the, the equipment's expensive, uh, it's a very expensive thing to do and reports I'm hearing that there are very few cities our size in the state of Ohio that currently pick up their own trash.
Have we looked into rates for privatization?
We'd have to go out for bid, but I, you know, I've tried to make some phone calls and, and like I said, we're right in the ballpark. One of them was cheaper, but they go, but you gotta bill it, we're not gonna bill a customer.
Like Mr. Gross said, when you.
How's, how's that gonna help us any?
Turn out too good, I don't wanna give away the sanitation.
So, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, like Mr. Gross said, when we gave away to the water department, it didn't turn out too good. I said, I don't wanna give away the sanitation department also.
I'm trying, I'm trying not to.
But we gotta figure out a way to save money.
Yeah.
I mean, costs go up, equipment cost goes up, um, so, you know, it's, try to. I mean, costs go up, equipment cost goes up, so, you know, it's try to figure out ways to save money, or ask for more money. I mean.
I mean, that is an option. You know, if we, if we raise the rates, we could get another, not only another truck, which we're going to do anyway, but we could get more personnel to where we could use even more of the two-man trucks.
The rates just went up, correct? And we already had that baked in?
Yeah, we went up a whopping 3%. We gave out raises of 6%, so, and I dare say, whenever we get to enter into contract with trash hauling, it's going to be even more than what we're paying. So I don't think the 3% is going to keep us afloat for very long. The only good thing we got going for us right now is the price of fuel's gone down. It does save a money on the fuel. That's the only cost reduction I've seen.
Well, all I can say is, if you're one of the people that complains.
Well, I, I know they're going to be.
No, 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 I'm just saying, what's the feedback with regards to a rate increase in order to absorb some of the costs?
There's going to be a contingent. I, I'm, I'm well aware that there's going to be.
Does this need the emergency clause on it also?
No, no, I, I expect us to go the full three readings, and, you know, I would expect people to come to the next council meeting, voice in their opinion about that. I, you know, I expect that.
Okay, invitation's out.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, on to roundtable. Lisa?
I have nothing.
John?
It's fascinating, all the new things we've had come in as far as development. Be nice when all of it comes out. It's nice to have people here discussing some of the, disagree with some of the things we want to do. And like the mayor said, there's other festivals in two weeks, so don't forget to go. I hope they have a little more cruel weather. That's all I have.
Thank you. Shannon?
Oklahoma, presented by the Madison County Arts Council, is this weekend, Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 7:00, Sunday at 2:00, I believe. I am taking a year off of the Arts Council summer show this year, but from what I understand, it is not to be missed, and they're knocking it out of the park yet again, so I hope to see everybody there.
Rich?
Tomorrow night, I'm going. Okay, I want to thank all of our city employees for all they do. You know, some of our people work in double time, they're working in the street department, they're working in the trash department. I mean, things are just kind of crazy, so thanks to all of our city employees. And I'd like to mention, on our fire department runs up to July 8 of this year, we're up 143 runs over last year. We were 1426 this year, and it was 1283 last year, so we're up 143 runs for the year. Steve Sausman, I think that's a great choice.
I think he'll do a good job. Known Steve a long time. He's got a lot of good insight, and he's been around, so I think he'll, he'll do a good job. Congratulations to Jennifer on her move. I hate to see her go, but God bless her. She'll do a great job. She's done a great job here for us, and I really appreciate her very much. Joe Moser, good friend of mine, he seemed stepped down, but, you know, he's like the rest of us, we're all getting a little older, and I'm sure he wants to spend a little more time with family, and so. Only other thing I got, next safety service meeting will be on August 12 at 6:00 p.m., conference room next door. And thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and watching also, and hopefully we can get our sanitation department back on track. It's going to take a lot of work, a lot of money, from what I understand, with all the growth that's going on. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Greg.
I appreciate all of the comments that we get from the people that come, and hearing both sides of that, it's, that's always nice to hear. I mentioned at the last meeting, and I'll mention it again, the hottest month of the year generally comes up right now. I'm sure the fire department is still in dire need of fans. If anybody wants to donate, if you're still watching, or if you're a council member and want to donate, they'll accept those donations and get those to fans, the people that need them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rex said?
Yeah, I, I'd like a little guidance from the council. What exactly are you wanting me to get from these aggregation brokers? Are you wanting to know what their administrative fees is? They're not going to be able to give me rates until, they're not going to give me rates. So is that the only thing I'm going to do, is say, okay, what is your administrative fees rates, or, you know? I'm. Well, we had a whole comparable program there. I mean, there's lots of things that they were doing. It's not just the administrative fees. You know, I mean, they had, they had value-added services, I agree with that. But there might be a difference in the rates. I mean, they're not going to give you rates, but neither did SOPEC tonight. That's not how this, they make, they basically get you locked in, and then they work on the rates, and then they keep corresponding with you when they get the rates, and then they go, okay, I think the market's at a good point, we should lock in your rates now, is what, is how this worked in the past. I'm assuming it's not any different. SOPEC's not able to really give you what the rates are going to be. They can tell you what they are today, but they're going to negotiate those for you. So in order to compare, I can't compare rates.
Were you part of the process when the last electric aggregator was chosen?
Yes. I brought it to council, and it was.
Was it a choice of one again, or was it?
Yeah, it was a choice, it was a choi, I mean, I had a couple companies, like we're doing now, and I chose one over the other because of the, the working relationship that they provided, they were easy to work with, quick response, and different of what I'm seeing now. Only thing is, when I brought it to council, they weren't saying anything about renewable energy, and this, this group does. That's the only difference. And I don't know if that's the problem, I guess. I don't know. But like I said, Ohio passed a resolution that all energy suppliers has to use at least 8.5% of renewable energy in their energy sources. So everybody's going to provide that. So if you've got a problem with renewable energy, you can't get around it, it's out there.
So what were some of the reasons that was our first energy that was?
It was first energy, first energies, I'm thinking providers, but it doesn't sound right.
But you eliminated them for?
I eliminated them because they went out of business. They, they did something inappropriate, and the PUCO shut them down. There are another couple companies that I can reach out to, but I need to know what you want me to, to ask then. Only thing I can see difference is, what is your administrative fees, and compare that? You know, they're all going to go out and competitively get as low a rate as they can from the market, so.
Yeah. I would say, my, my suggestion would be, when you look on any one of these compare electric providers, they're like, well, what's their admin fee? Is there a delivery charge? Is there a certain number of months? Is there, you know, sometimes they have hidden, I guess, hidden fees, or?
I'll try, I'll try, I'll try, I'll try my best to get appropriate information. I just, yeah, I just look, I'm looking for guidance, and I appreciate that. That's all I got.
Yeah.
All right. Can I get motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.